Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of the March 23rd, 2023 Regular Meeting at the Naperville Park District Board of Commissioners. Please stand before the flag. Flag's ready.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands on my mission underground in the middle of liberty and justice.
Roll call please.
President Gibson.
Here.
Vice President Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Anzier.
Here.
Commissioner Janer.
Here.
Commissioner McRae.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Todd.
Here.
Do we have any matters in public?
I do have one to read. From Tracy Janjers... Is it Jan Jersen? I want you to reach out on behalf of my 10-year-old son and his neighbor girl from your soccer team. Our coach Mitch Backus has already corresponded with Stephanie Ensign. People really love it in the Naperville Park District, but I am personally not satisfied with the response since he has received as it led us to our boys and a seeding run for this coming spring soccer season. I'm sure Stephanie and Kimberly can share their correspondence for the junior cup. I am happy to forward it, which includes pictures of the kids and a nasty discrepancy in size between our fifth- and sixth-grade boys compared to some seventh- and eighth-grade boys who played this past ball. At the end of the day, our boys are a good team, competitive and very skilled as a team against soccer. We have won the Naperville Premier League for as long as I can remember, but winning a competition is not what is a concern here. Injury to our children is a top priority. If you review the pictures next year, I have posted a case of them in the email below. You will see boys playing with men on a park district field sanctioned by the park district. This is not safe and unacceptable for my 10-year-old. My son is an avid soccer player and has been playing with Naperville Park District and Mitch Backus since he was four years old. He also plays the club, but he has a June birthday of 2012, and many of his friends were also in fifth grade, reported to Bezzel Monday. Naperville allows for him to play with friends and that is invaluable to him, and it allows him to play more sports he loves. And while winning is nice, it is not that important to us, but our children's safety is of the utmost importance, followed by their happiness. I told Mitch, our coach, I would not sign Tanner up for this team this spring if he weren't playing in the seventh- and eighth-grade league, as I did not feel it was safe for myself. He did a lot of research and had conversations with the park district and assured me he would be in the fifth- and sixth league. So I agreed to sign him up only to get schedules recently and find out we were in this sixth- and seventh league. I appreciate it is no longer seventh and eighth grade, but now it's sixth and seventh grade. However, my son personally, a June 2012 birthday, is one of the others in fifth grade. He could very likely be playing against a seventh-grader born in 2009 if they were held back by their parents. That could be a three-year age gap between boys who are going through puberty and up. There were a lot of injuries to this basketball on our team. We know all teams, but the sheer size difference, and that could be the difference between my son being able to continue playing the sport he loves or now being able to play again. Unfortunately, at this time, it seems my only recourse is to either pull my son to the team he wants to play on or not allow him to play some games if there's a large size difference. And also upsetting to him, but for his own safety, because the park district took things into their own hands without consideration for our children's safety. This is unacceptable and if the sound doesn't, does play and does get injured, the park district is where I will start. I am baffled and gassed mad at the lack of use on our boys' safety and the emphasis in which the park district has placed competition rather than safety. I'm asking this year, have you been discussed at the upcoming meeting this Thursday? That's experienced that board consider running this by moving our team back to the sixth league that we registered for and are co-regally at safety size more. I'm happy to attend the meeting this Thursday as well. Thank you for your time and understanding of our boys' safety and consideration for this matter. I realize this could be a large undertaking, but I would like to be the board with considering safety of all park district events and children the top priority.
Thank you, Bridgette. And with staff's bed, or Director Wilson, Secretary Johnson.
Yeah, President Wilson, I'd like to just take a moment to respond. This season, our Naperville Premier Soccer League Boys Seventh and Eighth Grade Division was canceled due to lower enrollment. In an effort to provide a playing opportunity for as many of our participants as possible, we allowed two of the registered seventh- and eighth-grade teams to modify their rosters and play down with the registered fifth- and sixth-grade teams. As a result, two of the teams in the division had rosters with seventh graders. And both teams have also added sixth graders to their rosters. We apologize first and foremost for the lack of communication early on with the coaches and leading out to the season on this decision to combine the grade levels within the league. Over the past few days, we have heard from parents who share concerns regarding the decision to allow seventh graders to play in the league. As a result, park district staff worked towards a solution to address the concerns that were shared by some parents and which also allows seventh-grade players the ability to play soccer this spring. Modifications are being made to the way their standings are kept and utilized. Teams with seventh-grade players will not be eligible for awards, and the games played against these teams will not be part of the official standings. Teams that have concerns of playing against the teams with seventh graders on their roster will have the opportunity to choose not to play the game without jeopardizing their standing in the league. The district will attempt to reschedule an alternative playing opportunity for any team whose game is not played. However, if an alternate cannot be found, a refund will be issued for any missed games due to modification. We hope that the modifications being put in place will provide a positive playing experience for all of our teams this season and provide the opportunity for kids who want to play soccer the ability to play soccer.
Thank you, Director Wilson. Bridgette, would you mind being sent to gentlemen?
1.1 approved February 23, 2023 Regular Meeting Minutes. 2.2 approved March 9, 2023 Regular Meeting Minutes. 3.3 approved March 9, 2023 Executive Session Voice Meeting Minutes. 4.4 Authorized Executive Director to issue purchase order to ION Shelter Systems Inc. in amount of $260,472 for rebuilding any storage shelter for the front yard plus rebuilding installation and site improvements project at McNills Park procured through the district's membership in the Goodbye Purchasing Network. 5.5 Awarded Contract for the Timber Creek Park Playground Renovation Project to Innovation Landscape Inc. in the amount of $136,747. 6.6 Awarded Contract for the Willow Way Commons Playground Renovation Project to Innovation Landscape Inc. in the amount of $135,040. 7.7 Awarded Contract for the installation according to the surface sink for the Willow Way Commons Playground Renovation Project to Perfect Turf LLC in the amount of $108,840. 8.8 Approved and Incentive Program of Limiting Food Service Inc. for food, grocery snacks, and related kitchen and food supplies. And that's all.
Thank you. Are there any items to be reviewed?
Move to accept. Consider to the items 3.1 through 3.8.
Stand. Roll call please.
Vice President Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Anzier.
Yes.
Commissioner Janer.
Yes.
Commissioner McRae.
Yes.
Commissioner Todd.
Yes.
President Gibson.
Yes.
Move to approve. Consider to the items 3.1 through 3.8.
Second.
What's about all the favor?
Aye.
On to new business. Let's start with agreement with North Central College.
Yes, I've got the first item. So included in the board's weekly packet on March 17th was a draft of an agreement with North Central College to partner with them on archaeology fieldwork at park sites. So the archaeology programs with North Central College as part of their studies, they're required to do fieldwork, actually going out to sites to improve the needs. And the college approached us about the possibility of working with the park district to better understand some of the cultural and historical significance of park sites within the community, which we feel that there's certainly a benefit to that. So with this partnership, the college would conduct the classes. They would all be led by faculty, completely supervised. They would be controlled, so the areas in which the fieldwork would take place would be approved in conjunction with the park district. And then as part of that, we would be able to learn about the history and share that with the community. Any items that are discovered as part of the fieldwork would first be researched and studied through the college program, but then would be returned to the park district in which we would be able to work with whether the Naperville Settlements or store items in-house. So the intent is to discuss the draft this evening. If there are any questions, and then bring it to the board for approval. If there's consensus on the floor.
Do we have any questions on the Friday?
Makes sense to me. I'll get to do these. First time.
I think it's great, and I think we're not buying any equipment for this. We're not afraid of the partnerships. I think it's very great. My one question, you touched upon it a little, is if any items found. I know there's just says at the conclusion of the college's research.
Airways.
Yeah. I think we're not concerned about time tables or anything for that, right?
No, being a partner in the community with the college and serving who would work with them to add any items to turn around. We're not concerned about the time frame.
I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
Master Plan Update, District-wide guide.
Yes, good evening. Tonight's meeting is P and E back done with our planning department in regards to the master plan update and next steps. The first step that we're looking at right now is the review of the master plan guidance. This was included in the park board weekly packet of March 17. This is the process that we follow in 2018 when we updated the master plan. First, we started with the input, as we know, from the focus groups, the extensive community interest and opinion survey, and the goals that were formed last year with the strategic plan. So then we have the guides, and we want to share them with the board tonight for review and discussion that were part of the March 17th weekly packet. Also, a step in the process is next month, on April 27th. We're going to be right across the way, the multi-purpose room from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. posting a public open house to also review the guides as well as other draft components of the master plan. So this is all part of the process that we want to share with you this evening. And then the input we received from the community outreach will be incorporated in the master plan and then further shared with the board. Something else I want to mention that's important is the National Recreation and Park Association that we know as NARA. Currently references the park district's 2018 version of the master plan on its website as a prime example with the guides based on our community of its size, about 150,000. And that the guides focus on developing a balance program of increased maintenance, new facility construction, and land acquisition to address identified deficiencies. So with that being said, we just want to open up for any discussion you might have tonight based on the guides that were shared with the board in the March 17th weekly packet. And this is just a touch point in the process. So knowing, like I mentioned, we're going to reach out to the community next month, gather more input, bring it back to the board. So this is just a stopping point tonight to make sure as we progress in the process, the board has an opportunity for input as well as staff who can have conversations. So I really appreciate the review.
I thought the process has worked really well in the past, and perhaps to continue using the same process makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. I have to go to the car for a moment.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a quick update to the board on the golf cart purchase for 2023. Staff has been working with our local Yamaha distributor to determine delivery dates and costs for our 2023 golf cart order. This was part of our fleet capital replacement plan that was approved by the board last May. The golf carts, unfortunately, like a lot of park and golf equipment, continue to have issues with meeting the demand for these past two years. And also the cost for these carts, like other equipment, has increased significantly. We just want to let the board know if when we receive the 2023 price from Harris Golf Cars, if the updated price exceed the price approved by the board last May, staff can be bringing to the board at a future meeting a new contract for purchasing golf carts.
Judge Johnson, I have a question. I know when you asked me to talk about electric golf carts, I think the price was one of the issues. Are the prices of electric golf carts also going up, or is the price not electric?
Actually, the price of electric golf carts are going up, and they're going up in a hierarchy to gas golf carts. The batteries are the issue with those.
Okay.
Just like a lot of things right now with EV vehicles and everything else, the batteries are kind of driving those costs.
Okay, so it's still not cost effective?
And we're getting incredible costs for our price for our trading gas golf carts. Those continue to be in high demand, so the price that we're getting for those would kind of be a win-win for us on both ends of this.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
23 District-wide asphalt parking lot, trail maintenance.
Contracts for the 2023 District-wide Asphalt Parking Lot Trail project are planned to be presented to the park board for approval in April. Part of that maintenance program includes annual contracts for cutting, patching, deteriorating sections, crack filling, and steel coating to extend life cycles before completely repaving as needed. So this is part of our annual maintenance process. This will run through with the board this evening, the sites are planned for. The steel coating project this year, scheduled sites for embalshing-based steel coating in 2023 include Central Park Trail, Pioneer Park Parking Lot, Springbrook Golf Course Parking Lot, and Springbrook Golf Course Maintenance Park. The schedule for sites for biobase rejuvenator in 2023, it's a product, so when our newer asphalt trails and parking lots, we can use the biobase. And once we use the biobase, we're fine, but if it's an existing older parking lot that has petroleum base, then we use the old steel coating. So it will be converted more to that natural biobase, just as an update there. The schedule of sites for biobase, that type of product in 2023 includes the 95th Street Community Plaza Parking Lot, for a few wide riverfront community parking lot and trail, New Page River Park Parking and Trail, Frontier Sports Complex Trail, Better's Park Parking Lot, and Wildflower Park Trail, as well as Willow Way Commons Trail. Pending contract approval, work is expected to occur throughout the spring, summer of 2023 with the intent to minimize impacts appropriately. Questions?
Thank you. Garrett, you have some group recommendations.
Contracts for this project are anticipated to be presented to the park board for approval in April as well. The scope of work for the playground renovations involves removal of the existing playground equipment, site versions, as well as installation of new playground equipment, concrete platforms, site versions, and landscaping. Pending contract approvals, construction activities are expected to begin in the spring with the intent that the project re-substantification in summer fall.
Right, Ron Roy Community Guarding Plots Improvement Engineering Services.
Staff members intend to bring in engineering services contract for future drainage and ADA accessible permits at the Ron Roy Community Guarding Plots to the park board for approval this spring at an upcoming meeting. The chosen firm will assist the Naperville Park District in providing services including site engineering and permitting, also cost estimating, technical specifications, bidding document development for future drainage, and ADA accessible improvements. The proposed improvements identified by residents and community stakeholders during the site master plan development process included ADA accessible raised planting beds, herbal paper parking areas that serve the guardin' plots at Knott Park, and overall site drainage enhancements. Engineering services are slated to be conducted this year in order to be ready for any grant opportunities. For example, the House side grant that we pursued in the past for other sites, and implementation improvements planned for 2024. Pending contract approval, work is expected to begin this spring as far as engineering work, with final documents being completed back in the year. So we're ready for grants as well as a project plan for 2024. Any questions in that one?
I have a question. So with the engineering group that is chosen, do they, is there a pre-assessment they have to do first so you can see like what they think the scope of the project is? Is that how that works?
Yes, so as our staff with technical expertise, we can develop that in-house. And so we're preparing proposals like RFPs, and we're sending them out to firms we have an existing relationship with. In that case, we can actually ask for feet. And then from there, we will present a contract to the board for consideration. The total contract value amount that's allocated within the 2023 capital budget for the site is about $100,000. Our punch is based on the services that we're looking at and other projections we're looking at, and it would be under $100,000, but that's our goal to be on that as a whole.
And so you said either there's firms already there that might reach out to make work with them?
Yes, we have existing satisfaction relationship that we can trust.
I appreciate you just here maybe, are they also going to look at the parking lot just north of West Street, like that district, that's part of it?
Yes, and so we're also looking at not only parking at the guardin' plot area, but also Knott Park. We'll also be looking at even the idea of lighting along West Street that's already there for your parking there in the evening and utilizing the facilities at Knott Park. And on top of that, as an alternate, we're also looking at the parking lot in the southern portion of Knott Park, so that's in the east side of West Street. If you've ever been there at night or escorted, that seems a little more informative. And so we're going to have an engineer take a look at that. That will be all included. And then the entire site, we're going to be looking at just general drainage. You know, how do we improve it? So we figure it makes sense to roll it all into one engineering package and then bring that to the board for consideration.
I've talked to a lot of people that are really excited about the guardin' plot movements. So it's not a breeze in mind, guardin' plot site.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. 2023 Stanford Meadow Shoreline Restoration Project.
A contract for restoring the shoreline in the eastern portion of the creek that extends through Sanford Meadows is anticipated to be presented to the park board for approval in April. The scope of work for this project includes stabilization of the shoreline extending through Sanford Meadows. This work will be the first part of two phases of the creek and a shoreline that runs from the pond at Hunter's Woods to the neighborhood and terminates in the contention basin adjacent to Sanford Drive. The 2023 improvements focus on an eastern portion along both sides of the creek, approximately 1,000 meter feet terminating at Con Road. The restoration work involves removal of basins and undesirable trees and shrubs, migrating to ensure stable slope and insulation of native seeds from the shoreline back to the property line. In 2024, the second and final phase of restoration is planned to be implemented, including the portion of creek spanning between Con Road and the pond at Hunter's Woods. Pending contract approval, work is expected to begin this spring as weather permits with the intent to re-substantification in summer fall. Lastly, as part of this item, I just want to mention it was a handout placed on the tables for the board review. And this is a letter, this is a draft letter we planned on, and I want to discuss it with the board this evening and gather any input and make any final changes with the intent to release it as it relates to tomorrow. But this is a letter essentially informing the residents that live adjacent to this part of the proposed project. As well as when our staff is out there working with engineers and flagging and taking, we noticed some encroachments. And whatever encroachments, there's like landscaping, there's even a small border of a pond that's on the park property. So we want to inform residents that we're working on this project, and we're asking them to relocate their personal belongings onto their personal property off of public land. And so we've given them the timeframe of to remove that by May first. And so they can reach out to a landscaping contractor to make those adjustments. Our concern is, you know, just besides the encroachment, is when our contractors are doing work that is causing damage to this personal property that's actually not in park property. So that's why we're sending that out, but we want you to see it before we send it out tomorrow or Friday.
I have a question, I have a couple of questions. First of all, this is like almost literally in that car, that this is our park. And I've walked that path many times. It's absolutely gorgeous. Will the path be affected at all when you're doing the creek restoration?
We're going to try to not cause impact to the path. If there's any section where we find we were excavated by the path and there's erosion and it hits, then we will reset the path.
Okay.
The intent is to keep it intact. Really, the focus is on the shoreline and the walkway. And as you may notice, when you walk it, there's a lot of cables that are exposed, a lot of erosion from the major events over the years. We need to restabilize that shoreline, so that's the purpose of the project. And that's what we want to make sure we reiterate to the residents, because we had the open house last summer online. We've been reaching out, but before we go out there again, we want to let them know again that we're doing this project.
As far as like the actual project though, like while you're doing it, will the path like not be accessible for residents? Because I'm just wondering if maybe it is possibly not going to be accessible, also including that and water, just to let them be aware that they might not be able to access that path during that time. Because I know that's a pretty heavily used path. A lot of people enjoy it.
No, that's a great point. We can add that to the letter to just inform them that from time to time, the path could be inaccessible. Another thing that we noticed over the last week, it's like perfect timing that we're doing this project. There's a section of the sidewalk, if you haven't seen it when we walked it, you will see that it just actually fell off, and it's now the edge of the concrete that's exposed. And so we definitely need to do the project, but as far as adding that, knowing that the folks know, because right now I think we have it barricaded. Our department helped us with that barricaded off, just that section. But let them know that when we're doing the work, at certain times, certain portions of the path will be inaccessible. Yeah, great point.
Perfect. And then the second part of my question would be, are these being mailed to people? Are we going to indoors? I was wondering how they're pleased.
Yes, so we're going to have a multi-point approach initially. Well, as to the clearing outreach last year, we had press releases, we had mailings, we had website postings. But this portion is going to be mailed, and then our staff's going to assess the, you know, as far as landscaping, that type of thing. If we still, we don't see any changes that are still landscaping in park property, we'll work with park police as far as encroachment. Just go and fly them and ask them to move it off. So our first step would be mailing, second step would be actually knocking indoors.
Awesome.
That's your question.
Hey, how many residents are we talking about here that are based in the land? Do we expect any pushback or issues of removing their personal property?
Yeah, so the, in the handout, the last sheet on the back is a great way, it's a portion of a plate of surveys. These are the ones that probably be most impacted. And so you can kind of see the lot lines adjacent to the path that we just talked about. So I'm looking here like maybe 10, 12. A lot of these, the homeowners too, they have the landscaping, everything on their property. As of right now, I think there may be, from staff reports, maybe two or three that are really like landscaping, really pushing into the park. And then if I was to reach out to them, we'll educate them and explain to them, you know, why we're doing this, why so important that the personal property is not their property and not our property. Thank you.
Are you planning to put up any signs, like we had a lot of comments, QR codes, still present and see what the work is?
We've done extensive outreach. What we did in this letter for these folks is we actually put the link to our website that they can go to. What we find is that usually at this point, residents pretty much know about the project, and they know it's a park or if they're just kind of moving to the area, they know they go to our website. So as far as, I mean, there will be like a site signage, several site signage, but stuff with a site like this really depends on where they access the pathway, right? And so they may not see it. So on our main site signage, we can add, just if you have any questions, contact our website like in the letter. But usually, if you're talking to residents, they might not tour extensive crew members. A lot of them, all they do is walk.
Well, I mean, usually less of like, there's no property, it's more just like, we wonder what they're doing there.
Yeah, yeah, so like for our playground sites, we do have like site signage, or and as you know, that's one designated spot. These are a ton because of like orders. And so like, if I live in one area and just go through one call set, I may never see the sign.
Makes sense.
And but for our main site signage, we'll have it. And that's where too of the letter comes into play, because we're getting all the residents back up to this area and general area that will get this and also see the web link and have the most recent information. So if anything changes to the project, we'll add it to our, but it's really easy for us to do.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Naperville.
Good evening. Next month, we will be requesting approval of a number of areas between us and the City of Naperville for a comparative dispatch and radio communications. Long story short, they're responsible for dispatching the Naperville Police as well as us. Instead of term, this would be the mutual best interest to enhance greater communications and the safety of non-duty public safety officers by authorizing the sharing of the radio system and the comparative dispatch between us and the City of Naperville. In summary, the city will configure and update if necessary the park district equipment so the equipment properly operates with the system. The city will provide training to park district police officers on the proper use of the system. The city will provide dispatch services for park district police officers in the same manner that they provide dispatch services for Naperville Police Department Patrol Officers. Naperville will provide a single contact person within its organization for any issues, concerns, or questions that arise for park district. The City and Park District shall cooperate and questions that arise for park district. City and park district shall cooperate in responding to any freedom of information requests submitted to either entity relative to the performance of this agreement. In turn, the park district will reimburse the city annual, for annual assistance with radio configuration support. The park district will reimburse the city for each radio that is activated on the radio system. When I took over, we had upwards of forty portable radios in service, and we've since been able to take that down to twenty. And now that twenty that we have quote-unquote stored would be available to the city of Naperville in the event of a larger scale, quick incident where communication could take. But we're no longer getting charged monthly for those twenty four. Park district will reimburse the city for each user that accesses the CAD system. Again, when I came on, we had twenty-five officers, we're down eighteen, but we were able to absorb a lot of the part-time officers with additional full-time officers. The park district will reimburse the city for annual services for configuring each computer that accesses the CAD system. Right now, it's a total of eight computers. And the park district will reimburse the city for call-taking and dispatch services provided to the park district by the city of Naperville. So long story short, this is just the most practical way for us to be dispatchable on the done for calls in and around the city, maybe in the surrounding communities.
Thanks, Jim. Just for clarity and dumb question here, what, what were we doing before? Like what, are we solving our problem or inefficiency? I mean, it sounds great what you're saying.
No, we're simply updating.
Just updating?
Yep, that's all it is. This has been in place since the inception of the park police.
Bus transportation bid.
Good evening. We are currently in the process of soliciting bids for bus transportation services for the summer campaign program. Buses are used throughout the summer to transport amper swing from Centennial each weekly and for multiple field trips. The bid was sent to fourteen vendors with one additional vendor who picked up a package. This will be the first time since COVID that our transportation services needs will be back to more of a normal schedule. In light of this, we are expecting bids to come in higher than the previous year. The bid opening will take place tomorrow, at which time staff will evaluate the bids received. A contract recommendation will be presented to the board at the April thirteenth meeting.
Thank you. All right, on to the department updates. Administration.
Um, no, we'll report, but a reminder, if you haven't taken the district cybersecurity training, that Director Oris will talk about it in his, in his report. Please get to that and his account and email account, please do that.
Good evening. Just a quick update. We are, we're working on our figure financial plan, so hang on for that, which leads us a little bit into the twenty twenty-four budget already that we're thinking about in detail. Our two thousand twenty-two audit, we're in the final wrap-up stages. We should be getting the draft any day now, and I'll put news on the audit front. We'll hear more about that also later when the auditors come to present. And lastly, just as a follow-up, we continue to look at our bond portfolio. If you remember, our two thousand fifteen bonds, Eric Anderson was here a while ago. We did a brander's ordinance. We're looking at refunding those bonds, and the market just didn't make sense to do so. That continues. The market's been volatile. There's, you know, interest rates keep rising. That does not bode well for our refinance, but we are looking at it in constant contact. And if the opportunity does present itself, we'd probably be coming back to you for another brander's ordinance to approve, and then that will allow us to refund those. So unfortunately, the market's not cooperating for that, but we're hopeful we will still have a chance to save some in this fall. That's all I have?
Thank you. A couple of quick updates from golf. The season is officially started now for golf. The winter kind of provided some occasional opportunities to open up, either in Naperville or our driving ranges. But now we have Naperville open to the area that was opened up on March fifteenth. So far this year, we've had about nine hundred rounds, which is slightly better than last year. Nothing home, nothing big to write home about yet, but the weather hasn't really cooperated. A couple of nice days here and there. We had over a hundred fifty golfers out on those few days, but for the most part, we're just kinda waiting for the sixties and seventies to pop up. Program registration began earlier this month, and I'm sure Andrew will talk a little bit about this too, but it's been really good on our end, especially for our golf programs. We're looking at an increase of about forty-one percent compared to last year for our golf programs for registration, just these past three weeks since registration opened up. And that's more than doubled where we were in twenty twenty-one. Number of our programs are filled, but we do have options available. So we're kinda pointing people out to where they can go for different events. For example, our nine-hole junior league might be closed at one golf course, but on a different day, at a different time, at a different golf course, we still have room available. So we'll be kinda pushing and kinda pointing out those ones that are open, making sure that people know that there's still opportunity out there. Couple of days coming up for golf. Our first term of the season is coming up in April. The Parter Fest Ball will be at Naperville, that'll be on Saturday, April fifteenth. Registration for that is open right now. Also, on April fifteenth, we'll have the Golf Alloza over at Springburg. So this is our annual event. This is kinda geared towards our junior golfer, especially kids who might be new to the game or just starting out. It's a great opportunity for them, and an hour of construction with our PGA professionals, check out some golf here, enjoy some games, and get a nice lunch afterwards. And mom and dad can come out and hear a little bit about our programs, and get an opportunity to have the kids come out and see if they're really interested in golf. So we're looking forward to that. It's always a well-attended event. On the business side of things, staff continues to prepare for the season. Hiring and staffing, at old golf courses right now, we seem to be in a very good spot. Our part-time staffing and our clubhouse and our maintenance, for the most part, are, we see a lot of our staff returning from last year, which is good. And for the staff that we know that aren't coming back, some of those positions have already been filled for most of our departments, except it might be our food service at Springburg, but we have a little bit of time to sort that out, since we probably won't be opening most of that up until the season. So we'll continue to work on that. On the full-time side, earliest month, we filled one of our two open golf course maintenance full-time positions, and interviewing continues on the second position. And those interviews so far have been pretty promising, so we're hoping to hear some good news on that end soon. And then finally, staff at Springburg is continuing to prepare for the reopening of the golf course. Out on the golf course, staff is attending to some of the minor issues that may have popped up over the winter. You know, winter really wasn't winter this year, we never really had any snow, which probably wouldn't have preferred, but that's okay. It wasn't much of an issue. Some of the rain events caused some of the issues that staff has already taken care of. Overall, we're very pleased with the conditions right now, but things are just kinda sitting there. So we need some warm temperatures here to start kicking in. We got about seventy to ninety days. That's what our window is for us to reopen the golf course. It's our goal right now. So if we get spring to kick in here a little bit, we got some fertility going out, and some new seeding, so we're hoping for some nice weather, we'll start a little kicking in. We'll keep, be updated on progress with that end, and also be looking forward to some reopening celebration plans.
Thank you.
Human resources. Okay, so now off that I have like a plug show of twelve things.
Absolutely.
Eric's a little distressed.
What was this saying?
So it is definitely March, our, our entire team is feeling it. But I wanted to let you know that the district's pension program, Ira, Illinois People Retirement Fund, has embarked on a website redesign project. Cindy from the HR team has been selected to be part of the pilot program, and she's given her fine equipment for the redesign beginning next month. But that was kind of a whole fun different thing. Next Thursday, Sarah, Ethan, and I are once again presenting our wedding for war for talent by leveraging according to HR and marketing strategies presentation. This will again be in a virtual format, it's been the second time that we've done that, and it's part of the Women in Leadership Services Day of Impala Herbert. So, let's speak to recruiting. You're gonna hear it again a couple more times, I'm sure. But the district is once again offering the community referral program. We had a little bit of success with that last year, so we're giving it another go. Community members refer an applicant who applies by name first and is hired into a position at the district are eligible for a hundred dollar gift card. The applicant must simply list the referring person's name and phone number on the application. The district will call the community member after the applicant's first day of work to ensure delivery of the gift card. We got seven employees last year doing it, but some people went above my cap, so we'll look into this again. This coming Monday, March twenty-seventh, there'll be a hiring event here at Ford Hill from one PM to three PM. We're gonna highlight camp counselor, concession, lifeguard, gymnastics, personal trainer, childcare, and agents' job opportunities. The timing of this is really to target those high school students that are home and off for spring break, but everyone is welcome to attack for that. We're not gonna turn anyone away. They'd like to speak with us about our opportunities. So as I shared at the January meeting, Marissa Comulo transferred from her role as a customer service specialist to the open town specialist position in the HR department. Throughout January, she worked in both departments, so that we didn't completely short-stay on customer service while they looked for her replacement, but she's now full-time in HR. So she recently worked with the marketing department on that handout that I just passed around. It's kind of this crazy idea I had, but she really got it and put it to paper. The idea with this flyer is to really highlight the leadership within the parks department and take an approach of mentoring and consumers development for those that are hired by the district. So you'll see in the front, we highlight our major, you know, directors, director and the managers, and some fun information about them, including our time interviewer. We also then on the back, highlights what our park specialists choose. And then we also get into the other universities that are represented by our full-time staff and the different types of equipment that people may learn to operate and the types of environments that they might complete the work in. So really trying to kinda highlight a little bit broader perspective, just, hey, this is what the job is. And also, everything will put a QR code, so that's on there, everything on the front and back. So Becky Cooper, our safety manager, resigned earlier this year, and for those of you that are keeping score, that means the HR department has forty percent turnover for three months. And I know that doesn't look good, it's a department that's just like, you know, coordinating employee retention. However, I'm very happy to share that Jennifer Herman has returned to the district in the safety manager role. She was in that role for about eight and a half years prior to Becky, and it was truly a timing thing. It was right for her. She was a good fit. She's still in orientation phase though, because changed a little, half eight years. This wasn't here, but already she's hit the ground running out of things. So despite the turnover, things are for stable.
Do we, do we actually go out to any of these universities to recruit people?
So we're starting to get more into the on-campus university recruitment. We were down at Illinois State earlier this year, actually that's last year of this, this whole year. And I was just down at Southern Illinois University. They have a pretty robust agriculture department, and we're not seeing that much. But we are looking at other universities out of state to just make connections also.
Well, you would leave the field also, the alumni.
Yep, maximize that alumni network, I think, yes. Yeah.
This is really cool, yeah.
Yeah, it was fun, and we also love doing it, so it's kind of both, thank you.
I like the hands-on experience, so.
Yeah, try to come back from a different angle, catch people's attention.
Oh, sure. So I know clearly, you know, people who have degrees or study something related to parks and outdoor stuff. Where's some other areas people might be studying that they maybe don't think would fit into the park district that would, that you could also kind of point out and say, hey, you're getting a business degree, you can do this, or something.
Right. Of course, there's a lot. We're seeing, just overall, park districts not being sawed out as an employer. You know, we have so many support departments, IT, HR, marketing, finance. So that was one of the things, actually, I was down at campus that some of that was talking to, talking to marketing people, and just really trying to get people , I was like, I never thought that. And like, yeah, we have a very good marketing department. So a lot of it is just trying to get out there and let people know that we're not just parks, that we're not just indoor fitness type facilities.
One more question. I always get, I always see parents, teenagers, and groups asking like, what's the youngest places we'll hire? Because they're looking to their teenagers. What's the youngest the park district will hire?
We have a handful of positions that we will hire fifteen-year-olds for. That's traditionally, well, we have a new day camp assistant position, swim lessons, scorekeepers.
That's hard.
What's my name?
Referees.
Yeah, I'm trying to think though, in age, because we're not hiring the sophomore referees anymore, basketball.
With referees, we partner with official fighters, but I'm fairly certain that they will hire that age as well. With the work permit, fourteen and fifteen-year-olds are required to get work permit first.
And then there are positions where you have to be eighteen because of the equipment and everything that you operate. So would you list all of the age requirement major departments and the job postings though? So people can certainly sit through and see, and then if they've got questions, they'll appear at the job fair, we'll answer those on the juice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is information technology.
Just a few updates tonight from IT. As Bridget mentioned, the annual cybersecurity training does continue. I was pleased to see the floor remain at two hundred and twenty-two users that are active and enrolled in the training system right now. We have eighty-six percent completion, so it's well on its way to being getting toward that one hundred percent mark or shooting. Other things going on, we've had three different vendors come to just kind of assess the space that are currently being set up and look at kind of best practices and options going forward to really bring the lead for board meetings to another level. We're just waiting on proposals and options to come back to that. We've started a process of cycling some of the older copiers out from the district. It's not that exciting of a technology, good news, except for people that print lots and lots of paper. It's exceedingly exciting. So we've got three of those that we pushed before this week. We are close to going live with the new internet for staff. Muse is kind of the front-end, one stop shop for anything that staff might need information on. That'll be happening, the exact date is to be determined, April, we'll go live about staff. And at the end of this month, we're making a big push to finish the bulk of, kind of the remaining transitions of cell phones over to two local providers. So that's keeping a lot more attention as well.
Just a little anecdote, because I'm, so I completed the training. Okay. As you told me today about our website, that he follows, our YouTube, or that he follows, how their page back hacked with social engineering, how like, social engineering, I know what that is. So I just wanted to let you know I was, I've been paying attention.
We, we do want people to actually, not just for protecting the park district, not to provide our concern, make sure we can get insider insurance coverage and everything. But the content rolling is great for all of our personnel security.
Thank you. Marketing communication.
Good evening, commissioners. Got a few updates to be tonight. So it's been a while since I've provided a website update. And previously, I would talk about different page views that we had. Now that we've been on our new website for a few months, I'm going to go ahead and bring that data back to you. So on March first, we launched the twenty twenty-three spring digital program guide and set a one-day record of more than a hundred and fifty-eight thousand page views. And that's really impressive, and also correlates to what we're seeing with registration. So it's not surprising that it's great to see. For comparison purposes, the previous digital program guide launch date record was a hundred and seventeen thousand, which was autumn of twenty twenty-two. So we're seeing about a thirty-five percent increase between autumn and spring. Also, the digital program guide launch day for spring, comparing year over year, we are
Also, the digital program guide launch day for spring, comparing year over year, we are at seventy thousand page views from one day last year, so that's about a hundred and twenty-five percent increase. So again, just relative to what we're seeing kind of across the board, from looking at the program guide to registration, so all good stuff there. With regard to sponsorships, this month, we brought on new sponsor, Window World, and they committed to rehab scotches and several other banners across our, our sports complexes, so a really nice addition to our sponsor program. So that basically brings our top sketch totals to six across our various parks, and that's a great thing to see, and people love them. We get a lot of great feedback, we've got some new creative ideas going in, and that one we're working on for the night park right now, so some fun little designs that you'll see coming in the future. And then finally, this week, we submitted an award nomination for N R P A's Innovation and Culture Board, and this is going to highlight our Neuroflex Fitness Program. And it's a program, for those of you who aren't aware, it's designed to support adults with various neurological conditions, and focusing on delaying the onset of various symptoms. So earlier today, Executive Director Wilson, they shared several testimonials from Neuroflex Fitness participants. Really amazing to see the feedback and to see the impact that a program like that has in our community. It's really, really, very, very cool. So, um, be really interested to see how our nomination does, and the winners will be announced at the N R P A conference in October. So we have a little while to wait, fingers crossed. Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, well, again, um, from the Berkeley side of things, we are wrapping up our fall and winter operations, and we're starting to ramp up for the spring, summer shifts. I'm happy to report that we have hired one new police officer. He comes with thirty years of experience with the Joliet Police Department, where he retired as a lieutenant. We have a second officer that we're hiring with previous experience from both Miles and Chicago that he's bringing to us. So one will be starting literally on patrol Monday, and the second one will be up and running about, within about a month. So we'll, our hours will be switching from the eight AM start on the ten thirty ninth to an eight AM start end, 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 so to speak. Additionally, we'll be going from an average of one officer each day to two in the evenings, especially on Fridays and Saturdays, upwards of three or four. That would give us one supervisor working, and ideally, we would have a part, a part central, and a part solid, because activity district-wide has already noticeably increased on the few nights that the weather's done really good. In addition to the officers, we will be opening up our park service officer position on Monday. We'll think about this, as we have six kids, for lack of a better description, returning this year, which is six more than we started with last year. So in addition to these six, we're hoping to hire, um, three more to give us upwards of nine. The hours will typically be twelve thirty PM to eight thirty PM. Focus will be having two of them at the beach during those hours, and then the other two will be, um, covering the seventy-seven miles of the bike pass that we haven't been in town to provide, because it's almost faster, we haven't been able to have it as much as we would like. The department as a whole has completed a lot of our mandatory training this year, including the expanded baton, the pepper spray, the taser, the tons of tactics. Um, for the first time ever, we are working quarterly now with the Aprilville Police Department to incorporate our officers in some of their mandatory training. They offer different topics every four months that each member of the department goes through, and we've been able to work officers from the Park District into this training as well, and this is gonna go a long way to them familiarizing themselves with each other, and it's a little face time that they wouldn't have normally had. So when the officers from the Park District and the city of Aprilville are responding to percolations, they actually have some familiarity with each other, and they go to training with each other. So it should go a long way to make them, what we do, a lot more practical.
G. C.
I don't, but I could, I could just stay up there.
Draw them.
So turn your hand around.
Be creative.
Right. All right, for the Parks Department, uh, March is typically the transition between seasons for parks. We're wrapping up tasks such as invasive removal projects, amenity refurbishing, and winter pruning. We're officially declaring winter is over. As sled health fencing and ice rinks are scheduled to be or have been removed. Staff have been working on servicing winter equipment and storing it away for the off-season, as well as prepping motors, ball field brakes, painters, tractors, and implements for the spring. Our crews have been removing turf blankets, laying out and painting multi-purpose seals, and getting our ball fields back in playable shape. Our first prescribed burns of the season took place earlier this week, and crews have already started pumping down Centennial Beach, and they have begun to water the interior walls. Keegid restrooms have been opened, and schedules for opening the remaining facilities have been coordinated based on programmed event starts, being started. While some of the sports fields in our parks are already used by the schools, our program use begins in earnest in just a couple of weeks. Our biggest challenges this time of the year typically are weather-related, and we've been diligently working to remain ahead of schedule to ensure all of that not to happen. We recently welcomed back returning nine-month part-time staff earlier this month, and are working on filling our remaining openings. So we're happy to report that we are starting the season in a much stronger position than in previous years. On the full-time side, we welcomed a new park specialist late last month, and we are excited to have another start next week.
Planning developed.
Yes, thank you. I have one brief item this evening, uh, it's in regards to the ten-year capital overview. Uh, we had an opportunity to review the capital overview at the February ninth Parks and Recreation meeting. We identified a handful of projects, um, that are recommended to be shifted and positioning as far as implementation here. Uh, the intent is to identify those within the overview and share that with the weekly packets in the board at a future, uh, or a future packet release date. And that's really it, so we'll keep you posted on that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, um, so as you all know, we have just completed our spring registration, which included many of our summer day camp programs. First day registration numbers exceeded last year by close to forty percent, which is right in line with, uh, Kevin, with the golf. Staff have been, and will continue to work on expanding our annual classes whenever possible to accommodate those on the waitlist. We're transitioning from best ball, and we're already getting ready for spring soccer. Practices will begin over the next few weeks, with games kicking off on April eighth. We have a hundred and nineteen premier teams, uh, which way exceeds our expectations, um, we think it might even be the record. First, we're thinking it's pretty happy. Yeah. Um, participation has widened down in NYU's, uh, but we credit this to the increase in premier than a lot of those kids may have believed in. So right now, we've got, uh, NYU's can do about two hundred and fifteen registered. Uh, so our staff is another big focus for us again this year, the highway. The greatest needs is within our day camp and pro, day camp program and concession operations. We are seeing a similar trend to what happened last year, where it's a little trickling in, uh, but we anticipate that it should increase within the next couple of weeks. Um, on a positive note, though, the lifeguard hiring has been very well so far. Uh, we have thirty-six new applicants that have been appointed to go do the training, um, and six other applicants that are coming in for interviews, and we will continue to bring on lifeguards as, um, you know, until it starts to seem really bad. Ford Hill Activity Center, um, on March second, we began the new zero, another new zero enrollment campaign at Ford Hill, and so far to date, we have attracted two hundred and forty-six new members, so that's been a very positive. Um, and last but not least, we have a couple of special events coming up, uh, the Blacklight Egg Hunt on April sixth, uh, which we still have openings in the second slot, and then we also have the Earth Day Fair on April twenty-third. So, and I know, um, that guard volunteer manager is also working very closely with the Parks Department to get some of those spring projects going. Any questions?
Hey, Andrew, these, uh, programs that capacity, and we heard in, in Kevin's report as well, seems to be one of the big stay-away, keep, stay-away issues for the Park District here. Can you, I should probably ask Brad, but can you provide a list of all the programs within the entire parks with that have been on waitlist status, or sold out, or in capacity over the last year? Just so the board can start to wrap our arms around, you know, what's the size of this issue and everything like that?
Absolutely, we definitely can. Um, yeah, we, numbers this break have been amazing, I mean, it's just something I can't even imagine. Some of our day camps, um, the numbers, we've never seen numbers like this. So, um, yeah, throughout the course of the year, you know, the, the normal ones that you all go out, such as the gymnastics, the lifespaces, and some of that kind of stuff, but we can, we can certainly come together.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it'd be good for the board, too, when you hear these various updates, which is to have a snapshot in one place, everything that's been on waitlist status, uh, in the last year, I think that'd be helpful for the board to see. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. All right, our next regular meeting of the Park Board Commissioners will be April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM.
Move to adjourn the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
All in favor?